Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of Pasco City Council this evening, December 2nd, 2019. We have agendas, or we did have, we're out of agendas. I think there are probably a few floating around in the audience, or there's also a agenda and detailed council packet available electronically through smartphones through the city's website. We also televise our meetings on charter cable, as well as through the city's website, and also Facebook Live. If you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting is not interrupted. I also see a few signs, and leaving a sign up is fine, but please don't wave signs during the meeting. And also, if you get a chance to speak with council, you'd come to the podium up here and share your name with us. For our records, we'd be thankful for our record-keeping purposes. And finally, I think actually that's all the housekeeping items, so I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Martinez.
Here.
Milney.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
And Watkins.
And here. And if you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with equal justice and equality.
Third item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we consider these items to be routine, and I'll do them as a single roll-call vote unless a member of the council or public would like something considered separately. Those include the approval of minutes from the November 18th council meeting, bills and communications, and the total amount of $4,116,000, excuse me, $4,116,063.52. Also, to confirm cancellation of January council workshop changes, specifically to cancel the December 16th and 23rd council workshops, and also change the January 13th, 2020, to January 14th. They include legislative priorities, Resolution Number 3921, setting the 2020 legislative priorities list, and also to confirm several downtown development authority appointments, including position number five for Jose Inquez to position number, excuse me, Miguel Angulo to position number five, and Jose Inquez to position number seven, and also confirm reappointment of Sean Galen to position number one. Those are the items on the consent agenda, anything to be removed? Hearing nothing to be removed, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved and seconded, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milney.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
And with that, motion carries unanimously, we go to four no proclamations and acknowledgements this evening, so we go to five visitor to other agenda items. If anybody's here to speak on an item that's not further along on the agenda, this would be your opportunity. Yes, sir.
Hello there, Jeff Robinson.
If you can turn your light on, it's not defaulted on. Mr. Robinson, good to see you.
Good to see you too, I'm gonna miss you by the way, and I'm gonna keep saying subtle stuff like that. I just wanted to express my gratitude to the council on the decision that they made at one of their last meetings to create an arts commission, I think that was a very bold thing that you did. I think it reflects the growing changes that we see in our city, in addition to population growth, the fact that we're becoming more diverse, the fact that we are having more businesses wanting, excuse me, wanting to invest here, the fact that our voting share within the county is going up. I think that was a very forward decision, I think it was a good governing decision, and I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for that, you folks rock! Also, happy holidays, since I know I won't be seeing some of you until January.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, anybody else to say anything? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cindy Anderson, I'm a Richland resident, and I'm Vice President of Pet Over Population Prevention, also called POP.
And are you, are you gonna be talking about breed-specific legislation?
Not one bit.
Okay.
I'm here to express my support for the construction of the Tri-City Animal Shelter Facility, and encourage you to support it also. As you know, the shelter build was originally approved in 2009, and has been put off by council for ten years. The condition of the current shelter is so dilapidated at the point that it's inhumane for not only the animals, but the employees and people that visit there. Most of you have toured it, I think everyone's been there but two of you, within the last couple of months, who you're aware as well. As you know, Pet Over Population Prevention has recently been awarded a state grant for $300,000 to build a low-cost spay-neuter facility in the area. We would like to locate this either within the new shelter facility, or very close by, but we need a commitment from the city of Pasco before our grant expires in July of 2020. POP is looking for Pasco city-owned land or an existing city building to rehab within a half-mile radius of the proposed shelter location. To clarify, this low-cost spay-neuter facility will help the citizens of Pasco and surrounding areas who are living within the federal poverty level, an affordable option for their pets for spaying and neutering within our clinic. Your shelter contractor will benefit from having the accessibility, including the financial relief, of using our facility. I urge you to move forward in identifying the land for the shelter and the availability of real estate for POP. The city of Pasco process for organizational input has been slow, and unfortunately, time isn't on our side, we would need a decision by February. I'm also here to encourage you to increase the Tri-City Animal Control contractual budget. This is one of the few remaining shelters in Washington State that historically hasn't enforced mandatory spaying and neutering prior to adoption, contributing to the pet overpopulation in the Tri-City area. The reason is that the budget doesn't support the need adequately. The budget needs to include funding to spay-neuter all shelter pets in the direction of your new shelter contractor. In the last five months, Pet Over Population Prevention has funded over $50,000 to various veterinarians in the area to spay and neuter the Tri-City Animal Control animals prior to adoption. Doing this should significantly reduce the homeless pets of your community, but it isn't sustainable. These expenses should not be up to the few animal-loving volunteers and fundraisers in our area. These costs should be covered by the taxpayers. In closing, please keep the momentum going for solutions to the shelter building, and become proactive towards the reduction of homeless and suffering pets in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Julie Webb. I was gonna speak about BSL, but I will cut that part out. I am here as a volunteer for the Tri-City Animal Shelter to speak with the council members about getting our community a new animal shelter. After doing tours with our three city council members the last two months, I believe our city council members now understand our urgency for a new shelter, as many of them have had trouble breathing during the tours. They also were able to see that we are running out of safe, usable kennels, as two more kennels were broken by dogs trying to escape. With the winter upon us, our outdoor kennel space has turned into an ice skating rink as the drainage system continues to back up. Just today, we had water leaking from the walls into the ACO office. Last week, one of the toilets in the women's restrooms randomly started overflowing. We are forced to use space heaters in the kennel area to keep the pups and people entering comfortable. I ask that you please stop trying to make the new shelter a fancy shelter, and just use one of the many ASPCA blueprints that are available to use online. Make our shelter functional, that's all we ask. We know that these building layouts work, and we'll have proper ventilation and plumbing that our animal shelters need. We can't keep putting this off as our health is in question. To get Kenwick and Richland more involved, maybe we could look at spots down on the Columbia Park Trail near the Edison Onramp. At the Richland City Council meeting on 11/19, after we spoke to the council members about our urgency for the new shelter, their city manager responded to us with, "Well, it's in Pasco." A lot of the council, a lot of the council members from Kenwick and Richland said they felt bad because the shelter was out of sight, out of mind. It's just not up to you, Pasco, to get this right, it's all three cities. We need to continue to put pressure on the city managers to get the community, shelter staff, and animals the shelter we deserve. Please find a bigger plot of land so that we can have POP spay-and-neuter clinic attached as well. We volunteers are having to transport animals to Benton City, Prosser, and Walla Walla to get them altered. This is unacceptable, we need to be able to, we need to have an affordable altering at our shelter, in the same building, where we can get them all vetted as they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Drew Proctor, and I live in Kenwick. And I just wanted to bring some numbers forward. I moved here in 1994, and at that time, the Benton Franklin Humane Society had the animal control contract, and they were in the building that the Tri-City's animal shelter is in now. And when I came here 25 years ago, I was appalled at the shape that building was in then. So here we are, 25 years later, still in the same building, and it has not improved at all. So as for the numbers, the 1990 census said the population of the Tri-City's area was By the 2010 census, we were up to 193,567. And according to TRIDEC, their estimate for 2019 is 296,480. So we are approaching the time when our local population will have doubled from what it was in 1990. Now, I'm not asking you to believe that the animal population, the domestic animal population has also doubled, but you know, it has to have grown considerably with that increase in population. And because of that, the shelter is just filled to bursting. Okay? So, we do need a new shelter, as Julie said, it doesn't need to be anything fancy, we need something functional. We need enough space to handle the higher volume of animals that are coming in. And I know some people say, "Well, this is not that important." I mean, we have really an unlimited number of needs in this community, and a very limited amount of money. But if you, even if you feel like the animals are a lower priority, please give a thought to the people who work there, that you would not want to have to work in that environment. And there's some very good, dedicated shelter employees that come into that dark, smelly environment every day and do their best. I have also heard people say they won't go down there either to volunteer, or to look for a pet, because it's so unpleasant. And that is working against our aim, which is to find homes for as many of these pets as possible. So I thank you very much for your time tonight, and I hope you will give this some serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and knowing that we do have, now, yes, ma'am.
I've heard the argument as well, I hope that it's not true, that the animals aren't really a priority, but I would hope that you would take into consideration that your constituents do feel that the animals are a priority, and you represent your constituents. So, you know, as elected officials, I would hope that you would take into account what the members of the community want, and not just what personally you feel is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And final call? And noting, we have two items that are related to animals this evening, meaning a update to our legislation, or as well as also contract for animal control, and I'm intending to give an opportunity to speak to those items if needed. With that, we're gonna move on then, past, that is, Section 5, we're gonna go to Section 6. First of all, reports from council members this evening. Anybody wish to attend a meeting or event that they share? Not seeing any hands raised, so I do note that we also have General Fund monthly reporting statement from October, and also Item C, an update on body-worn camera program, specifically records impact, and I believe I see Captain Harpster here this evening. Are you presenting on that, or any introductory comments? I think the light on by the city manager means you're on, Captain, if you wanna give us an update.
All right, good evening. So, we've already got our first slide up there. Just, I wanna give you a really quick rundown of our body-worn camera program. We started this process a number of years ago, and during, during our testing phase, we tried out many different systems of body-worn cameras that are out there, and then upon final selection, we chose the Axon product. We started our training on that system last summer, in the summer of 2018, and it took some time to get all the hardware and all the equipment in, installed, here onsite, and that happened by the end of last year, about this time last year. And then, so we just started a full implementation of our body-worn camera program, the first quarter of 2019 is really when we just got it going, so just coming up on one year of using our cameras. In that year's time, we've actually got about 13 terabytes of video storage being used, so it is a, uses a lot of storage capacity to house all that video. Some of the things that, that have helped us with this, some of the highlights that we have noticed is in the evidence world, evidentiary, video adds further dimension to a written report to better depict an incident for the courts, so it just adds that one more element for the courts to be able to use, prosecuting attorneys, and officers. An example of that would be our DUI field sobriety tests that can be viewed to enhance the officer's testimony. So with the body-worn cameras, one of the things that, that we have is, all of our, our storage is cloud-based storaged, and it's through a part of Axon that's called evidence.com. The body cameras themselves communicate with a phone, and then that phone can be used to take pictures of evidence in the, at a crime scene, and then those evidence pictures now can be tagged right there on the, on the officer's phone, and get uploaded to the cloud, right there, just as soon as they take that, that information. So it, it really cuts down on the time an officer spends, from the old way of taking the pictures, printing them out, and then adding them into evidence, it's just a lot better way of doing it, it's more accurate as well. Officers can also review video of an incident to recall the details prior to doing the report, so it makes for more accurate reporting. Another aspect that body-worn cameras has helped us with is training. The video enhances an incident debrief, allowing officers to have more of a learning opportunity. An example of this is if we have a pursuit, the officers will always do a debrief of that incident. Not only are our cars have video, we've been using video in our cars for about 20 years now, and so this just adds that one more piece that they can use to review an incident, how, how everything unfolded, and how they can be better at their job. Another training aspect is that defensive tactics instructors can review incidents, enhance learning points for future lessons, so they can look at, at how an incident, or a defensive tactic procedure was used, and kinda go over those fine points to make sure that we're, they're doing it correctly, and, and find out, okay, are there any learning points that, that we need to hit upon to make sure that our officers are getting everything done just right? Complaints, officer complaints with this video has been very beneficial, and it has been for a number of years, with the, the car cameras, but the, but the actual body-worn cameras now, video's been beneficial to review citizen complaints of officer misconduct. So the majority of the complaints that our, that our sergeants receive are resolved by reviewing the body-worn camera video of the incident. Frequently, a person's recollection of an incident is different than the actual event. I had a sergeant relay to me that even this weekend, somebody came in to make a complaint on an officer, they pulled up the body-worn camera, and found out that person wasn't at the event. The event didn't take place, as that person had relayed to the sergeant, and our officer's conduct was absolutely the way it should have been, and they were exonerated of, of any kind of complaint of that nature. But, and it has also been beneficial when issues have been identified internally and externally, but when the, when the sergeants review that video, it has helped us to be able to identify those cases, and then in these cases, officers have also reviewed their own video and self-critique their performance, so they'll, they'll go back and look over an event to see how, how it played out, and actually see their, their performance wasn't meeting their own personal standards, and it gives them the opportunity to make changes in their behavior. Another area is, is public records requests. To date, we've had approximately, we've had 48 body-worn camera public records requests, and it does take up quite a bit of time to fulfill those requests. On the city clerk's end of it, they've reviewed approximately 72 hours' worth of video, and then redaction time of that is about an hour and a half per request. So there's 48 requests at an hour and a half apiece. And then also, in the police department, we also have to review videos. We've, within the, the police department themselves, we've got about 48 hours of video review time, and about a half hour per review and compiling of that video data, and then we have to then generate that video for the requister, which takes another half hour. So it is quite time-consuming to go through these processes, you know, the, the records requests, but it's something that we just have to do.
And can you give us an example, or a short list of some of the things that are being reviewed for potential redaction? I mean, there, there, something is, it happens on camera and on video.
Sure.
There are some circumstances that not all things should be made public for a variety of reasons, is my understanding.
Right. So just as an example, a body-worn camera sits in the middle of, is about in the, the middle of our officer's chest, and when they're recording video, if they, their body moves toward their computer terminal, that, in computer terminal then has to be blurred out. So every frame has, has to be, that has to be redacted. If there's, yeah, if there's children that aren't involved in the incident, other, yeah, and then also...
There is a specific list related to public records?
Right.
And that sort of thing?
Exactly. Especially if, any kind of HIPAA information then has to be redacted. So it is quite a process, and it is a list of, of information that has to be reviewed to make sure that we're not, that information's not getting out into the public.
So it's not related to whether something might be flattering or not, but something specific based on...
Correct.
Okay. That helps. Okay? So, helping, and well, and to, help me to, let's see, we adopted, and we've kind of been wading into it, not, we, we haven't just said, boom, here's the cutoff time, and now we're into it, we've been easing into it, and what was the ratio of officers that are involved in it? Is every, every officer?
Every officer patrol...
Is, is on it now?
Yes.
Okay. And other thoughts, Mr. Zabel?
I did wanna share just a couple other things, the policies around the body-worn camera program are very extensive, including when to turn it on, when to turn it off, those type of things. Those are things, policies, we went over pretty, fairly extensively with the community group we worked with for a couple of years, including representatives from ACLU, and those are also policies that have stood now to reviews by the Washington State Accrediting Agency, Washington State Association Sheriff's Police Chiefs, as well as the National Kalia Accreditation. So those are, the policies are very extensive, very thorough, and I think provide excellent guidance for the officers, as well as they're available online for the communities, so the community knows what those policies are as well. Definitely, I, I think these policies have enhanced community and officer safety, impact certainly to police records, there's a cost associated that in terms of the public records piece, the clerk's office, and the, and the records clerks with the department itself, but it does settle, settles a lot of questions and concerns about officer conduct, and if, if the police department is in the wrong as far as conduct, that's, it gives us an opportunity to correct, and it also gives us an opportunity to make a determination, such as Captain mentioned a few minutes ago, that officer conduct was appropriate in that case. So I think overall, a very beneficial program for the city.
Okay, Mr. Zabel. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just two clarifying questions, one for you, Captain Harpster, and probably one for someone else on the, on the chain. So, is the time spent on these public records requests separate from any discovery for legal proceedings and such? That goes through a separate channel, and with a separate amount of time accounted for?
Yeah, yes. So when, when the public records request comes in, it's reviewed by the city clerk's office, there's a piece that the police department has to provide that information back to them, and then from there, if there's any legal, there would be a legal side of it, then it would also be reviewed from there.
Thank you. And, Mr. Zabel, maybe you'll, you'll be able to answer this. I know the demand for public records requests has been increasing pretty dramatically over the years, and I'm just seeing this little snippet, I know, knowing that this is a relatively small fraction of the public records requests we have to fulfill as a city. About how much are we up to in terms of full-time equivalents for spend, for, for time spent on public records requests?
Last year, we were under, just under, the reporting, required reporting cost of $100,000 a year. This year, we'll probably exceed that, and we'll be reporting it.
Thank you.
Increasingly, the cost of business if you're, if you're a city, so PRA is a increasing share of the city's budgets, not all of it clearly, but the trend is going up.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Serrano, and then Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Captain, I know when we first adopted this ordinance, there were some pretty mixed internal reviews. Can you update us on how your pulse on the force is, whether it's being received as positive, or where they are?
Sure. Overall, the body-worn camera pro, body-worn camera program is, is been accepted very positive by our officers and by the staff of the police department. It has more benefits than, than not.
Thank you for the question and the answer too, I appreciate that, personalizing a bit too. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, Mr. Harpster. Not having seen what it looks like, other than occasionally on, you know, national news, but as far as the behavior of the, of the police officer, is it, you can't really see the police officer, you're just seeing the motions he's going through, is that correct?
Yes and no, I mean, depends on how many officers are at an event. So if, if there are multiple officers on scene, you probably are going to see the actual actions of a police officer. If the officer's in-car camera is also going, and the event takes place in front of a vehicle, then the vehicle's camera's going to capture their actions as well.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Mr. Alvarado?
I think this may have already been answered and I thank you for also answering a lot of the questions I had in the presentation, so I appreciate that from you, Mr. Zabel. My question is about data erasing, erasing or the management of it. Is that internally managed or is that, is there a, I know we have Kalia standards and things like that, but how do we manage that and how do we keep that true?
Well, that's something that we're always checking and monitoring, but for the most part, when a, when an incident is categorized, there is a certain time limit or time that that incident is going to live in the cloud. If it is a public records request or some other, like a criminal investigation, those type of things are going to be either indefinite or for, even for five years sometimes, just depending on the type of investigation that that video footage is recording. So sometimes an event will live forever and sometimes it will drop off in thirty days, just depending on what that video is. If it's a test video, it's, it's going to be gone within thirty days.
Thank you for that extra answer too. So will be living, you mentioned the thirteen terabytes and that seems probably a more static mark at this point, but as we either add officers or, and/or there's more stuff that ends up being flagged for need for saving, that sort of thing, but at the same time, it's not recorded in perpetuity, all, every single frame is not recorded in perpetuity.
Correct.
Okay. We appreciate the update and I actually would note that, in a way, because this is fairly quiet, it would seem that this, I think you're framing it at the point that it's adding another viewer dimension to the process in and in itself. We're fighting a way through to manage it. We're particularly concerned about the public records aspect of it. That's one I think we're going to be keeping an eye on, because we know that those requests generally are increasing. But it seems like another tool added and appreciate yours and the department's acceptance and encouragement about using this, using the system.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me have the opportunity to share with you about the, our program and how it's going.
Thank you, Captain. With that, then we are through section six on the agenda. We're going to move on to section seven on the agenda. First relating to an item we've talked about, I believe several times, related to mid biennial budget adjustment. Before I open a public hearing, ask staff for some updates, Mr. Zabel?
Yeah, that's a public hearing and we have discussed it quite a bit. I won't go into a lot of detail, but just note that this is the city's first biennial budget for 2019 and 2020. And one of the statutory requirements of biennial budget is a mid biennial adjustment, or at least a review, adjustment if needed. We do need some adjustment, as I shared with you last week. Out of a four hundred and fifty million dollar budget, we have about 1.6% increase in revenues to account for and estimated, as well as a 1.4% increase in expenses requested over the two-year period. As we shared with you last week, much of those increases relate to capital projects and some luck in moving some projects up, up the, on the schedule because of grants that have materialized and so forth. Actions by the council relating to LTGO bond or pending revenue bond. And then we also have a few staffing changes we'd want to discuss as well. Matter of fact, I mentioned from the comments earlier tonight, one of the, one of the increases in the CIP budget is to account for additional costs anticipated in the, in the animal control shelter. As far as positions, there are three requests for positions in this budget. One is deputy fire chief, as we discussed last week, an administrative assistant in the human resources division in the executive department, as well as a staff accountant to work with us on, in the, within the ambulance fund. And without getting into a whole lot more detail, I want to turn it over to the, our finance director and ask if Ms. Sigdahl might have some additional comments and then back to council.
Ms. Sigdahl?
I do not have any changes to what was presented last week. So like Mr. Zabel mentioned, 1.6% change to an overall budget that is close to four hundred and fifty million for two years is fairly minimal. We will still try to work to lower it, but it just would take exponentially more effort to get to that level of accuracy. But overall, we expect that, you know, if you approve this budget, we should be good for 2020.
Any questions of staff before I open a public hearing? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion if that's, or no.
No, we have to do, we do have to do, we should do, no problem. No other, no questions of staff, so this, this is very proceduralized this evening because we're talking about a four hundred and fifty dollar million, four hundred and fifty million dollar budget. We do a public hearing, so I'll open a public hearing. If anybody wants to talk about that, this would be your opportunity. Again, we, I'm not seeing any hands raised, but just reviewing, we did talk about it at length last week, I believe, and we've talked about it a little bit, this is the time of year to do budgets, budgeting as a plan. We're pretty close, 1.6% adjustment, carry us through hopefully the next year. I'll do a second call, still not seeing any hands raised, we make sure if anybody has an opinion on it. And I'll do a third and final call, and I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I'm going to close the public hearing and that would be a great opportunity. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4473, adjusting the 2019-2020 biennial operating budget for the city of Pasco by providing supplement thereto, by appropriating revenue received in excess of estimated revenues for the current year, and by providing transfers and adjustment authority and further authorized publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Alvarado. Again, a discussion by council on this, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be voting yes on this. Want to thank Ms. Sigdahl for the work that she's put in the last couple of years. I know there's been a big improvement in our county department and I just want to say, and also that there's audits, we account for our money and try to be as frugal as we can with our money, and that's our job, is to make sure that we're spending it right, although sometimes it needs to be moved so that we can make adjustments. But thank you for the effort and the hard work you put into all this and I think it's a fair adjustment for the budget that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your first vote. All those in favor of ordinance 4473 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. There is a second part to it, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4474, amending the 2019-2020 biennial capital budget of the city of Pasco by providing supplement thereto and further authorized publication by summary only.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Barajas. Discussion on this portion of it? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance 4474 say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And I'll just echo the point, so we've switched over to a biennial process, which is also shared by other peer cities, that is more common. The practical matter of conservatively budgeting and then experiencing better than expected revenue returns is always helpful and makes, certainly and probably the city's job easier, but still hitting it within a percent or two is a good sign of decent planning in which a budget is about. So I appreciate staff doing that and look forward to the closing out the biennial budget and of course, next year will be another biennial because Pasco keeps moving. With that, we are done with section seven on the agenda. We go to section eight on the agenda, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. First item is an amendment to behavioral standards discussed last week at our council meeting. Mr. Ratkai, updates since last week?
We don't have any updates since last week at this time.
And since, well, last week, we talked about it at council, since I think a fair number of people are here this evening, can you give us a thirty-five thousand foot level of what this adjustment is in its context?
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, was just going to suggest that. So as we presented last week through the passage of House Bill 1026, the Washington State Legislature recently enacted a new statute which addresses the requirements that cities and counties must meet in order to be able to enforce or enact breed-specific regulations for dogs. When state statutes are enacted or modified, staff in the city's attorney's office review applicable municipal code sections to assure continued compliance with the amended statutes in order to maintain the city's municipal code and recommend code revisions as appropriate. This item is, this particular item is a case where minor revisions are necessary. Current provisions in the Pasco Municipal Code Title VI meet most of the requirements of the new statute. However, a few minor revisions of the city's regulations are necessary in order to maintain consistency with revised statutes from the state prior to their effective date of January 1st, 2020. The proposed substantive revisions relating to this ordinance will serve to slightly ease regulations by adding additional alternatives for pet owners to demonstrate compliance with the city code provisions and adding frequency of testing for when canines cannot meet a required good behavior test. There are also some formatting revisions, and one revision intended to clarify the operative code section in the event of a violation of titles 6.05.110 and 6.05.320 subsection 2. We had a discussion and consideration at last week's meeting, we have the attached draft ordinance within your packet. I'm available, as much as my voice will hold out, and City Attorney Ferguson is available as well to field any questions from city council.
Okay, questions from, questions from council or to get something for consideration? We need a motion. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the purpose of consideration, I would like to make a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 4475, amending PMC Section 6.05.010. Definition of terms, 6.05.080, disposition of unclaimed animals, 6.05.110, refusal to redeem, 6.05.320, notice of quarantine, and 6.05.330, potentially dangerous and dangerous animals, and further authorized publication by summary only.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have second, Mr. Serrano, so we can discuss this. And I would just add, Mr. Ratkai, in the context of this is more housekeeping in nature of keeping the status quo of what we have on the books and have had on the books for ten-plus years. Is that, is that a fair summary?
Yes, sir. Housekeeping in order to maintain status with state statutes.
That said, I'm also aware that we've been receipt of a variety of emails from, from people in contact asking us to reconsider this fundamentally, I believe the breed-specific language as, as legislation, and, and that is something that I imagine there are some number of folks in the audience here tonight. On the first start, any questions or comments by council members? Wanted to give a public opportunity, since we've had some folks coming down. If you have, some folks were, we don't have, you notice we don't do clocks here, we love when people bring up new points. If you have some thoughts or you have a spokesperson, you have a small number of folks, want to share your thoughts, I would just note that tonight is modification of an existing ordinance. I think it's fair to say also that this body would, regardless of tonight's outcome, would be evaluating whether or not to change fundamentally its legislation in the coming year. I say that as I'm an outgoing council member too as well, so, so would just, I'd offer that as context as well. That said, anybody here this evening want to speak on this item? Is he a hand raised? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Deb Sporsich. I'm the Director of Tri-Cities Animal Shelter and Control Services. I stand before you now, not as your Director of Animal Shelter, but as a volunteer dog walker from the year 2013, when I met Cheekley. Cheekley was a two-year-old pit bull mix who was declared potentially dangerous based on breed. He arrived at the shelter after being seized by animal control because his Pasco owners did not have a permit to keep him. I don't know the circumstances of why Cheekley's owner sent it come for him. Maybe they didn't have two hundred and fifty dollars in cash for the permit fee, maybe they couldn't afford personal liability insurance, maybe they didn't have time or money to enroll Cheekley into a CGC class, maybe his owner didn't speak English and finding a Spanish-speaking CGC instructor was difficult or impossible, maybe they were scared of being charged with a gross misdemeanor if Cheekley got caught running loose in the neighborhood, or maybe they couldn't grasp the idea of owning a dog who had to be put on a leash and muzzle in their own backyard. However, I do know this, Cheekley was euthanized, not because of his loyalty or his optimism or his ease of giving hugs and kisses, he was euthanized because of your municipal codes. I stand before you now as your Director of Tri-Cities Animal Shelter and Control and I'd like to introduce to you Cheekley Animal Foundation. Cheekley Animal Foundation is a nonprofit contracted to run your animal shelter. Cheekley Animal Foundation is a tribute to this sweet soul and others whose life was cut short. Cheekley Animal Foundation has implemented lifesaving programs for our animals. We are proud of our work and we are successful because we've asked for help from our community. Tonight, we ask for your help. You have the power to end breed-specific laws against pit bull-type dogs. Last Saturday, our shelter dog, Cuda, a pit bull mix, was adopted after waiting three long months for a home. He was adopted by a Kennewick resident as a regular dog since their amendment went into effect last month. How sweet will be the day when all three cities agree, a dog is a dog. Thank you.
And if you're gonna, if you're gonna present anything, you'll need to have enough copies for everybody, as well as the clerk. Do you have enough, an extra one for the clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Leslie Madison of Benton City. I was a resident of Pasco, but due to the BSL laws and my work with pit bulls, I had to move. Many of my friends say they'd love to adopt one of my foster puppies, but they are deterred by the complicated and unnecessary laws that BSL brings to Pasco. The second page of the handbook I gave you will share my story on how and why I became so involved with the breed. Pages three through seven feature pit bulls that I helped transport, and then we'll go to page eight and through the rest of the book where I feature most of the pit bull and pit bull-type mixes that I've had the honor of fostering in my home. My very first foster ever was a blue-nosed named Xena, and tonight I'm going to talk about her story, and she's featured on pages eight, nine, and 10, if you want to flip there. Xena was used strictly for breeding. She was finally rescued when she was about three years old and she was now on her way to a better life. I was asked if I'd foster her, and I won't lie, I loved the breed at this point, but I was scared. Helping at an adoption event is a lot different than welcoming a pit bull into your home. I had to stop myself and ask if I could be more of a hypocrite. How did I expect to change the minds of everyone else if I wasn't even willing to foster a pit bull myself? So I said, sure, I'll give it a try. This was on a Friday and I remember it like it was yesterday. I was told that Xena was quiet and timid and she would just lay in her crate and not really do anything. I had to run errands on Saturday, so I canled all the pups and I left. When I got home, I went inside through the garage door that led into the dark laundry room. When I opened the door, I was greeted by this pit bull, this dog that I knew nothing about and this dog that I had literally met less than twenty-four hours earlier. I froze, we stared at each other and I took a deep breath. And I thought, well, this is going to go one of two ways. So I crouched down and I said, well, hi there, Xena bear, what you doing? And she just started wagging her tail and she gave me a big kiss. For months, I tried to help Xena find her happy ever after, then one red day I realized she was right where she needed to be. In the rescue world, this is what we call a foster fell, where you love the foster puppy so much that you just can't let him go. Xena became forever mine on August 5th of 2016. I started to try to comply with the BSL laws and it was ridiculous and tiring. Xena and I completed the canine good citizen program and of course, she passed because she's amazing. After I adopted Xena, my dad said he wouldn't watch my dogs anymore and I asked him why and he said, because you have a pit bull. Well, guess who my dad looks for, talks to, calls a good girl and asks if Xena can go down to the barn or the front yard with him when he comes over. He asks for Xena. He can't get enough of her. So I am sharing these stories with you today is not to give you warm fuzzies, even though the world can always use more of those. I'm sharing these stories because in each and every one, the problem was not the personality of the dog, but the extreme environment and level of neglect and abuse that each one of these sweet souls suffered and had to recover from. We need to stop wasting resources that don't solve the problem. If legislation is necessary, it should be utilized to solve the real issue, which are the humans that are responsible for the care of these creatures. We don't judge people based solely on their appearance, yet that's what BSL does to every single one of these dogs, even if they happen to have a block head, but there is no pit in them whatsoever. Thank you.
Yes, sir, and then ma'am afterwards.
I'm Tom Artemica. I'm a resident of Pasco. A little over a year ago, I went into the animal shelter with a friend of mine. Walked through, I've always been a German Shepherd person. Military Police Canine, those were my dogs. I walked past a kennel, and there was a pit bull sitting in the back of the kennel. She wouldn't come anywhere near me, so I walked past. My friend said, well, you've got to go to the kennel and open the door, because she may be scared. Well, some of you probably will remember her. They called her Betty at the time. I opened up the door, and some of you will know, you don't pick your dog. Your dog picks you. This dog slowly creeped to the front of the kennel, sniffed me, licked my face, and then laid on my lap. I took that dog home that day. Today, her name's Harley. I took her through Canine Good Citizen. She's probably one of the best dogs I've ever had, and this mean, terrible pit bull won't go off the patio if the grass is wet to pee because she doesn't want to get her feet wet. She's more of a princess than she is a vicious animal. The only thing that I'm seeing is she was in that shelter for over six months. She'd been brought back twice. And I can tell you the reason why. Because the legislation that you have says she has to go through Good Citizen Canine Training, and then that's not good enough. Once she's been trained, once she's proven that she's a good dog and great in the community, loves children, I got to take her back and get her tested every two years. And I have to pay for that. If I don't do that, again, I have to muzzle and leash my dog in my own backyard, in behind the fence. That type of discrimination towards a breed does one thing and one thing only. It causes that breed to be demonized in your community, and people will not help that dog. There was no reason that Harley should have been ever in that kennel for that long. I adopt dogs. I don't believe in breeders. There are too many animals out there that need our help. Your legislation prevents a lot of people from doing that. You need to think about it, change that legislation. Blame the, the deed, not the breed. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, staff. My name is Elizabeth Leck. I'm a Pasco resident. Physical appearance of a dog does not provide any clue to his or her behavior. Knowing a dog has a short snout and a wide head doesn't give us any information about whether he's afraid of thunderstorms or gets along with cats. Breed discriminatory legislation is a more accurate descriptor for these types of laws. These harmful measures are purely discriminatory in nature. They discriminate against people by placing unnecessary and unfair hardships on them simply because they've chosen to adopt or have a certain type of pet, and they discriminate against dogs based solely on their appearance. According to Dr. Victoria Voith, visual identification, even by professionals, is often wrong. In one study, Dr. Voith found that eight point seven percent of, I'm sorry, eight point seven five percent of adopted dogs breeds identified by DNA analysis were incorrect. Animal shelter workers were right in guessing the heritage of a mixed breed dog only twelve point five percent of the time. Because of the inaccuracy of visual breed identification, Dr. Voith questions current public and private policies based on dog breeds. Breed discriminatory legislation is simply panicked policymaking driven by anger and fear. It ignores the multitude of factors that may contribute to dog bite incidents, such as a dog's level of socialization and whether he or she has been sterilized. Besides the fact that breed discriminatory legislation wastes tax dollars and fails to protect people from dog bites, it can result in the deaths of hundreds of wonderful family dogs who have never bothered anyone. Families can file lawsuits challenging the constitutionality of the ordinances, and that can be expensive to the dog owner and taxpayers. This fight is about advocating for comprehensive breed neutral laws that target truly dangerous dogs and reckless owners. Unlike breed discriminatory laws, breed neutral laws are effective because they target the behavior of the individual dog. Laws that prohibit reckless or negligent pet owners from owning pets gets at the root of the problem, the behavior of the owner. Our communities deserve comprehensive breed neutral laws that focus on behavior, not bias. Our community deserves dog laws that demand responsible dog ownership and hold reckless owners accountable when their poor decisions result in other dogs or people getting hurt. Thank you.
Uh, ma'am, and then the gentleman. Go ahead, ma'am, with the purple. You, you raise your hand first, appreciate it, and then go with the gentleman.
Hi, my name is Sherry Georgian, and I am a Pasco resident. I just want to say that the breed-specific legislation would have prevented us from owning a pit bull mix. About a year and a half ago, we adopted a pit bull mix from Tri-City Animal Shelter. He was thirteen years old, came in as a stray. Um, I don't know why his owners didn't redeem him. We did go through the Canine Good Citizen testing, and he passed with no problems at the age of thirteen. Everybody else in the class was a puppy. He's now fourteen and a half. I just want to say that as a, a community member, I feel like we're preventing a lot of good dogs, just like our COA, from finding good homes. And I wish, I know if we make the adjustments now, it would be a dream if we would just eliminate the breed-specific legislation. So that many other dogs in the shelter have sat there four, five, six months. We've just seen in the last month that several dogs that have been there several months have found good homes. And I just want to say personally, in the past, I would have been, I was one of those members that would not get a dog of that breed just because of the restrictions. And I didn't even know about the Canine Good Citizen testing until we considered adopting our pit bull terrier. And so I think probably it'd be better to focus on community education and responsible dog ownership than breed-specific legislation. Thank you.
I'm Rob Westfall. I'm actually from the city of Yakima, Yakima, inside ACO number three. They asked me to come talk to you because we just about a year and a half ago got rid of our BSL measurement. And the city of Yakima has done wonders. Um, we do not have a pit bull problem. We have breed prob, we do not have a specific breed problem. We have bad owner problems. And with the BSL gone, we are able to enforce the rules that need be enforced upon bad owners, not bad breeds. Uh, personally, we've gone way down on pit bull issues. Most issues we had back in the day was there was a pit bull in the yard. We had to go pick it up for just being in the yard. We don't have to worry about that now. We do not require good canine citizenship either in our city. Um, we trade every dog the same, is equals now, and has done us wonderfuls. I have more problems in the city with your rottweilers, your German Shepherds, and Huskies than I do with pit bulls. Pit bulls are such an easygoing dog in our community that I, when I find them on the street, I can literally open my ACO truck and they'll jump in. That's how they work with us in our city. I mean, we've had nothing but wonderful experiences. We didn't have a big influx of also, and now we got fifty thousand pit bulls and the ban got lifted. We stay, study the same. Our shelter is less full of them because like everyone else said, people can have them. Before, we couldn't have them. They could only be in the county. We also had worked with also forgotten dogs. We worked with them quite a bit and still do. But for us, being the pit bull ban getting lifted has been an easier burden on the city, the animal control, and the shelter in general, and the public. Um, they're more now with the gone, with having to be able to everyone, they're more socialized, they're more friendly, people get to learn what they're actually about. The dogs are more socialized. When you do have a socialized dogs, you have dogs that get fearful. Fearful becomes aggression, and that's what, what the percentage has done when you put pit bulls in the dark corners, you make them, you ban them, is you're making a mean dog because you're not letting it to have the social interaction that it needs and deserves. And that's what the, the BSL present, measurement has done. Once we got rid of it, we don't have that problem anymore. Yakima has done a much grateful thing with it. We changed our ordinance so every owner is accountable for the dog's action, not just the dog. We don't have to worry about that anymore. And for that, I hope you guys do take that consideration and get rid of the measurement. You need to let every dog be a dog and charge the people that needs to be charged. It's on the other end of the leash, not the dog. And I'm a firm believer of that, and our city has shown it. So please take in consideration about that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Christina Amos. I'm a city, um, I'm a city of Richland. I'm a certified professional dog trainer. Um, I've been teaching at Four Paws for five years. I teach a lot of our basic CGC, Star Puppy, and Canine Companion classes. Before that, I have been a member of Columbia Basin Dog Training Club, where I volunteered as training director and a variety of other roles, but I also taught our CGC, Canine Companion and Star Puppy classes. Um, so all told, I've been doing this almost twelve years. My biggest problem with the CGC requirement has a lot to do with that it's a all or nothing. If a dog can't pass the separation anxiety test, which is honestly the thing I honestly see the most often, um, if they can't sit with me quietly, not whining, not making any noise, not pulling, all of that, I have to fail them on everything. There's no, hey, you did great, you have a great dog, but... And so, um, there's an extra pressure on trainers to sort of marginally pass dogs on that at least. Um, we are very strict on no aggressive dogs are allowed to pass the test. It's a standard that the AKC has set for us. But I have to be honest, when I'm faced with a dog that lives in Pasco, whose life depends on me passing them, I feel extra pressure to say, well, I know he whined a little more than AKC guidelines, but you have a great dog. Um, I don't like having to do that, and I don't like having to tell people, sorry, your dog whined twice, I have to fail you. Um, overall, the CGC is a great program, and I'm not here to tell people not to train their dogs, obviously. I make my bread and butter from that. Um, but I think we should focus on, as other people mentioned, um, enacting dangerous dog legislation that you guys can enforce, um, codes that people can actually work to, and allowing the resources of the ACOs to go towards that instead of policing whether somebody has a pit bull in their yards is muzzled or not. Thank you.
I wasn't originally going to speak, but after hearing some of the comments, I've actually researched this issue, and I think one of the things that gets lost when we discuss this particular breed-specific law is why we have one. Ten years ago, the city was faced with some very difficult decisions. There was episodes of animal cruelty. There was episodes of negligence. The city didn't decide, oh my God, I hate pit bulls, let's make sure they never come up. What the city did is they sat down with experts that they had available to them at that time, using the data that they had at that time, and made a law that they felt would allow people to own the dog they wanted, but would also protect the public and protect the animal and prevent dogfighting rings. Now, I oppose breed-specific laws myself, but at the same time, I don't think it's fair to say that the city is discriminatory or that the city deliberately set out to do a bad thing. The city acted with the data that it had at that time. And the real question as a citizen of Pasco that I am left wondering, as I hear all of these things, is not an issue of discrimination, but whether or not the time has come to change the law because of its track record of success. And that is where we are now. You can't do that now, obviously. You're going to modify the statute as you deem appropriate, but I think that that's the discussion we should be having, not accusing the city of wrongdoing, not accusing people who've only been here for two years of somehow being blind to the community around them, which is what I hear when somebody accuses my city of discrimination. I would expect better, and I think the city has earned more trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for expressing a point I wanted to, uh, share. Appreciate that. So, uh, other folks this evening? Yes, uh, yes, ma'am, and then, and then you left. If, you first, and then you next, ma'am.
My name is Ashley Sean Walden. I'm obviously here tonight to talk about pit bulls. As you're probably aware, last December, through a public records request, my colleague acquired the dog bite records from Tri-City's Animal Control, specifically human bite cases for Kennewick, Richland, and Pasco for the last five years. I believe that Councilman Maloney has already forwarded you these records, um, as he requested them from me back in October after news reports, um, shared some of the dog bite statistics that we presented to Kennewick City Council members, um, at that time. So between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen, there were two hundred and one dogs involved in human bite cases in the city of Pasco. Of those two hundred and one dogs, only eighteen were pit bulls. There were twenty-eight bites from Retrievers, twenty-three bites from German Shepherds, twenty-two bites from herding breeds, which includes American Blue Heeler, Australian Cattle Dog, Australian Shepherds, and Border Collies, as well as forty-two bites from Chihuahuas. I realize that Chihuahuas don't cause as much damage as some of the, the break, the bigger dogs do, but the bite rate is obviously still notable. The bite records also show that there were numerous repeat offenders, dogs that bit a person on more than one occasion, and only one of those repeat offenders in Pasco was a pit bull. Some people may look at Pasco's dog bite statistics and think that the breed-specific legislation is working because pit bulls have fewer bites than other breeds, but this is far from the truth. Between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen, there were only eighty-three dogs involved in human bite cases in Richland. Of those eighty-three dogs, only ten were pit bulls. So Richland, which doesn't have any breed-specific restrictions, experienced fifty-nine percent fewer dog bites in total compared to Pasco in the last five years. Even when you account for population differences between the two cities, the, the rate of dog bites per capita is still significantly higher in Pasco than it is in Richland. Pasco is a perfect example of why breed-specific legislation is ineffective, because these restrictions have created, um, a false sense of security and created an environment where owners of other breeds of dogs have become lax in their socialization and training because they don't believe that they have a dangerous dog. Richland has experienced far fewer dog bite incidences and less incidents with pit bulls than Pasco or Kennewick in the, the last five years despite having no breed restrictions in place. I personally know several pit bull owners that have moved from Pasco or Kennewick to Richland purposely to avoid the breed-specific legislation, so I would venture to say that there's very likely a higher population of pit bulls in Richland just because they do not have breed restrictions. Um, I'm sure by now that you guys have probably heard from pit bull opponents who, uh, may be sharing dog bite statistics from dogsbite.org or animals24seven.org, so I just want to address those upfront. Um, you should be aware that these websites rely on news stories about dog attacks to build their statistics, which creates a severe bias and a lot of missing data. There is no national dog bite registry. Uh, every city and county in the U.S. keeps their own records, whether that's in their local police department or their animal control department, for dog bite cases, and typically these records are not accessible online or anywhere except for a public records request. So the authors of those sites, um, have, definitely do not have all of the data unless they are continuously requesting public records from literally every city and county in the United States, um, on a continuous basis. Now, another issue as many people have brought up is the fact of dog breed identification. Uh, there have been a number of studies that show even dog experts, shelter, uh, staff, and veterinarians have a really difficult time visually identifying a dog just based on looking at it. Um, one study found that out, one of every three dogs that shelter staff had identified as a pit bull actually had no pit bull type breeds in their DNA makeup. Uh, one of the things I included in that packet is actually a pictures and DNA test for both of my dogs, one of which is an American Staffordshire Terrier, um, which is lumped into the pit bull breed. And then my other dog, who is often mistaken for a pit bull, actually has no pit bull breeds in his DNA makeup. He is an American Bulldog mixed with a lot of other random breeds.
And I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Yep. Um, so I understand that, uh, the council is needing to just make some minor updates to the code right now, and I hope that you do consider looking at all of the relevant data. I printed out, um, quite a bit of additional information for you guys to read through, and I would encourage you to look at cities like Yakima or even Sioux City, Iowa, who just repealed their pit bull ban last week. Um, most of the, the cities that are starting to repeal their breed restrictions are taking a look at their dangerous dog ordinance to really see where they can clearly define what a dangerous dog is and have consequential fines in place for owners of dogs who exhibit those aggressive behaviors and have those, um, breed neutral policies in place instead of breed-specific legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano, you have your light on.
Yeah, I do. I just, I, I have a quick question. I know typically you don't ask this of the public, but the lady that's the, the animal control officer, can you give us a number of dogs that would be identified as pit bulls currently at the shelter? And I guess the second part would be an anecdotal question. How many people would have claimed they would have taken those dogs from Pasco but had been barred due to this legislation? but have been barred due to this legislation? Uh, anyone that can answer that is, you know, fine for me.
I would have adopted one, but it depends on jurisdiction to do it.
What?
These, uh, October first, these were our twelve pit bull mixes that we had at the shelter. Um, as of right now, Boomer, Ruby, and, um, Petey, who actually I've just found out is a bull. Is not, he's a, yeah, American Bulldog. So he is actually not even a pit bull, but you look at him and everyone thinks he is. So, um, the rest of them have been adopted. Um, one has gone to the Forgotten Dog Rescue. Um, but otherwise, they are in, uh, more Kennewick people did as soon as the, um, legislation went away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lady LaGreen. And I appreciate also, people have been doing a good job at bringing up new points. There's also been a few times been bringing up old points. So bringing up new points is very helpful for us. We appreciate that.
I promise I'll bring up new points. Uh, hi. My name is Shannon Jolson. I'm with Canine Collaborative. I'm a dog trainer and a dog groomer. You haven't heard from one of those. Um, and I have been one for many, many years. Um, everybody's already tested to, uh, their love of pities, which I'm not going to go over that as far as that goes. Um, I am a canine evaluator for the CGC, uh, as well as I work in Finley in a ru- very rural area with, um, a lot of low-income people. And we have a massive amount of pities over in that area. Um, as a trainer, I've seen the CGC be a hardship on families. And I know that's part of the amendment that has to be made is, is you guys have to decide how often they have to get it again and whether you're going to continue with having the dogs do the CGC. Um, I've had the comment made about a foreign language, somebody that does the CGC in a foreign language here in the Tri-Cities. There is maybe one now and then, one Spanish-speaking individual now and then that can do a CGC test for someone. And there's a lot more Hispanic families that own pit bulls than that. And when you have, like Pasco does checks. So when you have the checks going on and they're being told that they have to get a CGC, where do they go to get that? What kind of financial hardship do they face in order to keep their dog? Uh, and those are, that's something really seriously to think about. Those are your constituents. Um, the other aspect of that is any dog can get a CGC and any dog can fail a CGC. All right? It is not the be-all, end-all of whether a dog is friendly or not. And for some reason, that's been what most cities have grasped onto as whether or not it's a test of whether this is a friendly dog or not. There, it's not. You can have a dog. I, I just had an incident here when I did a test, uh, at the dog show. I had a dog that passed the test with flying colors. And then after the test, went for another dog. Um, so there is nothing to say that that makes a dog safe just because they pass a CGC. All right? So that's really something to consider. I've literally had people in my classes in tears because they didn't know what they were going to do because they didn't have the money to take. It, and there's a misnomer. There was a comment made, um, by somebody over at the Kennewick session that it was only $25 to take the test, between $15 and $25, which it's not just $15 to $25 to take the test. Okay? Most of the time, and especially if there is a language barrier, which I've done classes, not speaking, I speak kitchen Spanish. That's what I speak. And to be a dog trainer that's te- that speaks kitchen Spanish, teaching somebody else how to take the CGC, how to train your dog, okay? So that's how passionate I am about making sure people get through this. Um, I've sat and held the hand of an elderly woman who was trying to do this, sobbing because she didn't understand what I was trying to tell her. And there was nobody there that could translate. And we would just work it through each test. There's ten things on the test that we have to train to work through so that she could keep her dog because the landlord told her she had to get rid of it. Unless she had the CGC. Okay, so it, it goes beyond what you guys are just thinking. And that's not to say the city of Pasco is, is bad for enlisting this. I get it. I worked down in Prosser where I saw the dead dogs laying out on the ditches from the dog fighting. Like I said, I live in Finley. I know. I've seen what that is. So I understand it. I see the whole picture as far as that goes. But to say that it's no big deal, it's a hundred and twenty dollars for the training minimal. And then twenty-five bucks to take the test on top of that. And then if your dog doesn't, if you're not staying up on it, because you just take your dog out to the park or whatever, another hundred and twenty-five in two years. And for some people, that's the difference between, you know, a car payment or your gas or your food. All right? So that's just something I want you to consider.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kristin, and I live in Pasco. Um, three years ago, we bought a house in West Pasco. We weren't originally looking to settle down in Pasco, but once we started looking at Tri-Cities, we really fell in love with the area. It never crossed our minds that BSL still existed in Pasco. We had no idea the direction our life would take, and we quickly realized our shared passion and ability to help dogs. Soon after, we adopted a dog, began volunteering at local animal shelters, and fostering through multiple rescues. My love and involvement in the community has continued to grow because of this. We would love to live in Pasco for many more years, but with BSL in place, we feel extremely hindered by this outdated law. We want the freedom to open our home to any dog in need regardless of their breed. As a result, we have to consider living in a more open-minded city where members of our community are not discriminated against. BSL is ineffective, costly, outdated, and needs to be repealed. I've seen firsthand the uphill battle faced by every pit bull and any dog who looks like a pit bull. Pit bulls are one of the hardest dogs to adopt out, and it's beyond heartbreaking to see them constantly being overlooked. We must judge and evaluate every dog for their actual behavior rather than on assumptions and stereotypes based on breed or looks. Looks don't equal behavior. While inadequate studies can always be found to support opposing viewpoints, we must base our conclusions from valid scientific research. I don't want the judgment passed from one breed to another. Not all Chihuahuas are biters and not all pit bulls are dangerous. I want all dogs to be treated as innocent until guilty, not the other way around. I feel like I've learned a tremendous amount about dogs in the past few years, and most of what I thought and knew about pit bulls was wrong. By handling every new situation with an open mind, I've been able to replace former misconceptions with accurate information. By having BSL in place, we are leading by terrible example. All dogs are individuals and valuable members of the community regardless of their breed. I once heard a quote that caught my attention. It reads, "It's true that pit bulls grab and hold on, but they grab and hold on to your heart, not your arm." Thank you for your time.
And I'm going to offer one more. If there's anybody else who wants to wrap up, uh, I'm going to, you're the first. One, so I would ask you to choose, Ms., uh, would be Ms. Mahoney. Would that be okay?
No, I, I want everyone to speak.
No, um, one more, and if you want to be at Ms. Mahoney, that'd be fine. Okay. What are you going to do? We're going, uh... I'm going to, um, I'm sensing we're going to make a decision on this here pretty soon. So I'm offering one more, one more person to speak.
Thank you. I apologize for not, um, introducing myself before I kind of slipped in. Dawn Hansen, I live in Kennewick, but I volunteer at the shelter as a dog walker. Um, I appreciated the impassioned comments of, um, the Pasco gentleman. I wanted to make clear, however, because I don't think that it's helpful for any of you to feel personally attacked, that, um, we realize that I, probably most, if maybe none of you, was on the council when this originally, when this, um, legislation was, was originally enacted. And, um, I don't, I, I have not heard in any of our conversations that any of us think that there's any malice or, um, or ill intent involved. Um, with this legislation, I think that it was something that originally was well-intentioned, but misguided. And so what I'm going to ask is the same thing that a couple of people have asked is, we could stand here all night and tell you what we believe and what we think and what we know in our hearts to be true. But I would ask that you really do your research, not just, you know, um, from the people from our side or from the other side that ta- that tell you what we believe. But really go to, um, the one, um, the one woman mentioned going to, um, reputable sources. I'm a librarian, and I could talk all night about media literacy and non-bias and all of that. But, you know, I'm, I'm sure that you're all intelligent enough to find, um, non-biased and, um, reputable sources to find your information. So I could tell you all night about how they used to be known as nanny dogs and their jaws don't really lock and all that. But I'm really trusting you. And I think that most of us that are here tonight to ask you to reconsider this legislation are really trusting you to do your homework and to really find out for yourselves. So we thank you for listening to us, and we are hoping that, um, that you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Appreciate everybody's, uh, bringing your, everybody's passionate about this subject. And I think also, uh, to point out your, uh, closing comment too, that everybody in council wants to try and, try and do the right thing too. And appreciate noticing that. Uh, we're also probably not going to make all people happy all of the time, but that's also why we're elected to, to lead. So we're going to have to make some decisions. What I want to do is re-summarize and frame this in, in terms that this amendment tonight is to keep the status quo. But I think also there's a, a significant recognition, and I'm going to even add my personal opinion on this too, because you made that point too about, uh, new council members. I actually am one of the, uh, the, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to say I'm the person, uh, that significantly pushed, uh, about fifteen years ago, uh, that the best option available at the time, uh, since we did have a pit bull problem or a pit bull owner problem, two sides of the same coin, uh, that the GC, uh, GCC program was the best option available, not even perfect then. Uh, but I've heard a variety of points tonight. Cutting to the point that I am going to support this amendment tonight, uh, and, and, but also encourage this council, since, uh, my service concludes at the end of the year, uh, to, to reevaluate, uh, in, in the coming year with the assistance of staff. Couple of the points that I've heard tonight that I think are helpful for this discussion because it was not perfect, was not decisive fifteen years ago, nor do I think it is even tonight if we were to take everything at face value. But some of the points that I've heard is, and, and would consider the council to consider or our staff to help out with is, is the GCC program effective? The period- periodocity question. And also, I think it was much cheaper too when we instituted it, uh, fifteen years ago, even adjusted for inflation. Uh, it was also, uh, the best available option to be able to identify what I'm going to call reckless owners, I think was the term, before a bite occurs. I think that's the holy grail of being able to find perfect legislation. Uh, so I heard somebody mention too about how Yakima, and I'm going to, uh, quote this, specifically found a focus on owner accountability. I'd be curious to what that is as a practical matter because I think over the years, I've found good intentions haven't been able to be a substitute for a specific municipal law that is sustainable. Uh, and I see the attorneys, uh, smiling too, that, that the number of tools we have is always difficult. I also think the questions of updates of data, specifically the Pasco experience. It was kind of interesting to see some of the, uh, analysis of the, of the, of the, of the bites and then also referencing Richland. Uh, my memory was, uh, Kennewick started enforcing their law, and we had a lot of, uh, either sketchy owners or sketchy dogs moving over to Pasco then. Maybe that's changed. Uh, also, the questions of bite severity. Uh, and I think there's a variety of other things that are probably in these documents and the emails. So again, I'm going to be supporting the vote this evening to keep the status quo, but encour- encourage council to, uh, uh, consider, uh, reviewing this. And I also know staff have been taking notes on this too because this is also a changing issue. So those are my personal thoughts on that. Other thoughts?
I just had a quick question. What kind of timeframe would we be looking at as far as? I know we're going to have the new council, but I mean, are we looking at like, say, February? Are we talking January where we could actually vote on this?
Well, as a practical matter, you also do a, a Groll Retreat. This would seem to be a goal session, a retreat session. This seemed, would seem to be a natural, uh, if council wants to consider, uh, 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 changing that, getting some community input maybe, uh, with those listening sessions. Uh, I'm also, I guess I'd also ask staff as a practical matter, if council were to want to do a fundamental review of this, is this something in the next couple of months, the next quarter, uh, that sort of thing, Mr. Zabel?
What I think, uh, Mayor, Council last week had mentioned, uh, uh, incorporating it into the, to retreat for a discussion. I think that would certainly give us sufficient time for the benefit of the audience. That's typically in March. So it'd be a couple of months. That'd give us a few months to, between now and then to, to look. Uh, certainly, we have been looking for sources that are... There's a lot of sources out there, trying to find objective ones. A little bit more of a challenge, as was pointed out earlier, so.
I don't know if that helps, Mr. Melnitz. It, it, I would say it's variable, but it's, it, it's spring to be, to be probably...
I've just never been against, uh, breed-specific laws. I just, I love my animals and, uh, again, but I'm definitely willing to do all the research and do what we can to come up with the right decision.
Okay. With that, Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I, I just want to applaud the folks that are here today. It's a Monday night about eight twenty-six. You could be doing a lot of other things. And I, I'm always very encouraged to see, uh, citizens who are engaged, who, um, have built, uh, a sense of capital within a, a group to organize themselves to come and, uh, talk about specific, uh, thing that they really care about. So I, I, I applaud that. I think that that is, uh, just a great model for other folks who really care about things in their city to do the same. I love seeing, uh, when folks are just really engaged in, uh, in that. So I really want, uh, want to do, uh, um, uh, just express that. Uh, I think that's, it's very encouraging to me. Um, I, I am, uh, in favor of removing the BLS in future. I think today would, would be hasty for us to just say, yeah, we're going to do that in reactive. Uh, I do not like to operate in that way. But I, I do, uh, I do want to engage in this conversation soon with, uh, council. And I'm just one, one person in here.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Mr. Martinez?
Yep. And I, my, my comment would just be that we're definitely going to look into it. Um, and perhaps one of the ideas is taking it out for a public survey when we do our surveys and see how our community feels about it. Um, I wish, I wish everybody was a dog owner like you guys, and that's the problem. And so education, surveys, there's a lot of things we can do. And, uh, and I think with what we heard tonight, um, it would be irresponsible to not have discussions on this in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll, I'll echo, uh, Mr. Alvarado's comments. It is, it is encouraging to have people come out and talk to us. There's times where we're making, we're making some extraordinarily impactful decisions to our community, and the viewing audience is sparse. So even though, um, I, I'm going to support the action we have in front of us at this time, um, it is something I am doing my research on and making sure that I'm well-informed. I know staff is doing the same. And I may not respond to every email I get, but I certainly am forwarding them on, and I am reviewing the, the, the documents within that. So, um, I will be fully educated when we're ready to make a different decision or consider and retain it either way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Any other thoughts this evening? Hearing none. Uh, I guess I may ask council, one, one more? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Amanda Cameron. I live here in Pasco, and I have abided by your guys' regulations for eight years now. And a lot of people, when they say CGC, they mention the money aspect. But for me, it's being a responsible owner of not wanting to put my dogs in a situation where they could fail. I wouldn't put my kids in a situation where they could fail. Um, when animal cont- control comes out to do all of the initial things, they meet your dogs. They know they're not vicious. They come up. They take their pictures. They go through the fencing and the muzzles and the leashes and everything else. And I haven't had one bite incident in eight years, but I continue to, to go through with the regulations and pay the $520 because I do have two. Um, and I do it, I don't do the CGCA because I am a mom of a three-year-old and a five-year-old boy. My husband works full-time split shift. So being able to find the time to do it for me was kind of the bigger thing, but I love my dogs enough that I have abided and, and done the right thing. So it's kind of like I am being a little bit, um, I don't know what would you, what you would want to... a little bit, um I don't know what would you, what you would want to say or how you'd want to call it, but kind of punished for being a good owner. But that's it. That's all I had to say.
Counsel? Yes, ma'am. And then that'll conclude it with Ms. Mahoney.
My name's Mary Mahoney and I've done countless public disclosure requests regarding this. And I just want to say that um on April first, two thousand nineteen, I asked Lee Kerr, the city attorney, if he would send me the termination agreement between Washington State University and the Animal Control Authority and it's never been sent. And that's the reason. In two thousand three, WSU Veterinary School of Medicine went to Richland.
Ms. Mahoney, please address counsel.
They went to the city of Richland and made a deal to get research animals. And I've seen the lists. I've rescued a rescued bell, my dog, pit bull, from um WSU Veterinary School of Medicine, best best dog I ever had. And um she's gone now, but this contract is still intact. And you're going to be hamstringing a wonderful person who's dedicating herself, her life, to making things better for all of us. And we're paying taxes for this and she's naming Chicklay after a pit bull and she's going to be constrained by this contract. This has to be terminated. And you are Mr. Ratkey, am I saying your name right? You're the head of the Animal Control Authority and I've asked if I could attend your meetings.
Once again, I'm asking you to address counsel and also the subject is whether or not to adopt the ordinances amending the section this evening, so please confine.
This was all in relationship to it.
Can you be more specific and and address counsel than on your concern?
Okay, well, I'll tell you that every ordinance for potentially dangerous dog or dangerous animal, every potentially dangerous animal or dangerous animal ordinance in Kenwick, Pasco or Richland do not abide by the constitution for due process and they need to be relooked at and rewritten.
Appreciate you making that point.
I don't want to write any more public disclosure requests. I don't want to make any money off this. I want the right thing done. And you know, I'm persistent. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And so counsel, there is a motion on the floor to amend Title Six uh behavioral testing standards. Uh I'm going to do ask for a voice vote unless the council wants a roll call vote. I'm going to ask all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Uh and as pointed out too, uh spring, keep an eye on us, countable accountability. Appreciate faces to the names and I also we have uh going to have six of the council members are going to be uh here uh starting in January, so they'll they'll be dealing with that. Thank you for the materials. Thank you for the thoughts and uh keep keep working with us on this subject. Thank you. With that, uh I'm going to, we have a few more items. Would we like to take a five-minute break or do you want to power through? Power through, okay. We're going to go on to item, next item is section eight B uh related to a rezon quasi judicial in nature nature as well as heard by our hearing examiner, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. This uh rezon request involves two small residential lots totaling just under eleven thousand square feet in area. It's at the corner of Alvina and Franklin Avenues. The current zoning is R one and the request is to make a uh zone change to R three. The applicant intends to build either a duplex or a triplex on the site depending on how his uh lot design uh pans out. The hearing examiner conducted a public hearing on this a few weeks ago in uh in on November thirteenth and has forwarded a recommendation of approval of the rezon to city council.
Questions of staff or a motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four four seven six, rezoning two parcels located at the northeast corner of East Alvina Street and North Franklin Avenue from R one to R three and further authorize publication by summary only.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Second been by Mr. Martinez, discussion on this? And Mr. Zabel's up, so I'm just making sure we're 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 going okay. Uh any other thoughts on this rezon, Mr. Alvarado?
I had a quick question. Um uh in the criteria for uh the rezon, uh um I know I drove by there there today on the way here. I just kind of took a little detour. Uh I noticed a lot of the area there is um no sidewalks and things like that. So is that part of the developer agreement to as as these things develop, the sidewalks get put in?
That's that's part of our municipal code, so so yes.
Not not part of the rezon tonight, but it's practically speaking, that would be a follow-up activity that would come after this.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'm going to ask for your vote. All those in favor of ordinance four four seven six, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Uh item C, a quasi judicial item also, uh rezon different area of town. Mr. White?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and counsel, and this rezon request involves uh a single lot on the south side of Henry Place between twenty-fourth and second and twenty-second, it's just south of Stevens Middle School. It's about one-third of an acre and the applicant is uh proposing to reconstruct a fourplex at the site that was destroyed by fire. Actually, there were two fires on the site at two separate times. Uh however, the uh rezon would allow the reconstruction of that fourplex to occur. And again, the hearing examiner conducted hearing on this item in November and has forwarded a recommendation of approval to city council.
Questions or a motion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four four seven seven, rezoning a parcel located at twenty-two sixteen West Henry Place from R two to R three and further public, authorize publication by summary only.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Alvarado. You need the floor, so Mr. Alvarado?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Um when I watch uh and having been part of a uh planning commission and um I when I when I do watch uh the hearing examiner meetings uh in I I I do I do hear the language of uh consistent with the nature or with the character of the neighborhood. Uh my question obviously has very little to do with this, but I kind of want to use this as a as a quick uh just reason, kind of where where that comes from. Is that a uh best practices of planning or is that a um something somewhere in our in our municipal code that we have that language? I know that it's referred to a lot, but I'm not, I can't really pinpoint it where that's the practice.
It it is a portion of our municipal code and it's uh considered one of the criteria to weigh in on the up in the policy, if you will, of the value of the proposed rezon. And this, as as Mr. Maloney pointed out uh over the weekend, this um area actually contains a number of fourplexes on lots either the exact same size or only a small amount larger or smaller than uh than the uh one-third acre. So it may be appropriate at some point in the future to um convene a meeting with the property owners in the neighborhood and uh perhaps process an area-wide rezon that would uh adjust the zoning so that they're not non-conforming, that they are legal conforming uses.
And my comment is uh I we're definitely beyond this uh this item, but I kind of wanted to uh just for my own uh edification of where that comes from my, because my comment is uh I I find that uh cities tend to segregate poverty in certain areas because of the nature of the uh neighborhood and so that's just kind of just a comment that I, you know, would love to explore in the future of is that the right, the best, the best practice?
Uh Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm looking at the photo here and I didn't get a chance to go by there, but um that isn't the only multifamily property in that neighborhood. All those are apartment complexes right behind it, is that correct?
Uh yes, and there are number fourplexes as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance four four seven seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And two, Mr. White, I, over the years, this the the fourplex question is kind of come in a variety of ways and I think also related to insurance, that sort of thing. So if it makes sense to look at it a a group, is that something that would be uh staff initiated or or uh is there is there a consortium of owners that would make it practical to be able to raise the question?
It it can be staff initiated. Um when it is, there's uh obviously a uh sometimes a little, sometimes a lot more lead time and lead effort because if you get the owners together, they may not trust the intentions of the city and or not fully understand what's happening. And so there's that effort to conduct as well.
And or and sometimes there might be a a call them a champion who is interested in the larger picture because maybe they own multiple fourplexes or that sort of thing. So your your staff are open to the opportunity if it comes up in the future?
Yes.
Uh with that, uh we go to section D, an interfund and intrafund alone. I believe this is just a housekeeping issue, but I'll ask Ms. Sigdel for a short summary on this.
Uh that is correct, uh Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um just uh all of the things that we talked about last week in terms of uh necessities within the budget and uh timing of bond issuance and managing our debt service to as minimum level as possible, so utilizing funds um from that that a fund can afford um so that we do not have to go out for loans or bonds.
And distilled down into two resolutions.
That is correct.
Okay. Questions or a motion? Uh Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number three nine two two, authorizing the interfund loans from the general fund to the city's Marina Fund and Stadium Fund.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Milne. Discussion on this one? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you. Um Ms. Sigdel, um I see that we were were charging the the our interest rate of three point nine percent um for this inter- inter and intrafund loans. Um could you just give me a little background as to where the number of three point nine percent comes from?
That was our uh latest L I D bond that we issued and three point nine percent was the interest rate that um that we got for that bond. Um and our bond council went through a process um of um coming up with that interest rate based on the market factors. So we just usually try to utilize something that is recent um so that we're not coming up with that rate arbitrarily. Uh depending on the L T L T G O bond that is in process right now, that bond might be the next basis, but council can set any interest rates they choose.
So in this case, Ms. Sigdel, we there's no nothing specifically beholding us to any um any benchmark or any particular tie to an existing commercial rate or uh or anything. That that is entirely just a a decision we make in in within the city itself?
That is correct. Uh just an operational process where we try to utilize or use a rate that we recently received from a rating uh process.
In the future, I'd like further discussion on that as to whether um what when in what cases it makes sense, but um I'll be in support of this tonight.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, then the first item is uh there's two parts, so I'm going to ask for your vote. All those in favor of resolution three nine two two, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And second part, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you. Uh I move to approve resolution number three nine two three, authorizing the intrafund loan from the water utility to the irrigation utility and process water use facility utility.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Serrano, discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of resolution three nine two three, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. With that, we're through section eight, nothing on nine for unfinished business. We go to ten, new business. Uh personal services agreement extension uh related to animal control services. Mr. Ratkey?
Yes, once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item brought before you this evening is an extension of the agreement that the Tri-City Animal Control Authority has with the Chicklay Animal Foundation for Animal Control Services and Operations of the Tri-City Animal Shelter. Tri-City Animal Control Authority, as many of you know, is an entity made up of the cities of Kenwick, Pasco and Richland, with Pasco being designated as operating jurisdiction through an agreement. With this agreement, there are no major changes to the scope of work. Uh the budget for two thousand twenty is attached to the agreement as well. Said budget includes an increase of just over seven percent, which will go towards uh meeting the increase in minimum wage that is coming in two thousand twenty as well as enable the shelter to hire additional part-time dispatching and kennel care staff. That's the basics of the uh extension to the agreement. Uh we're bringing forth to this body for uh discussion and determination. Thank you.
Uh let's see, let's start with a motion if that's okay. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um one moment. I move to approve the extension of the personal services agreement with Chicklay uh Animal Foundation for Animal Control Services and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Brahas, discussion, uh Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I have a definitely a lot of concerns after having visited the shelter and um I question i- um is this adequate? Uh is this is this amount adequate? Is this the right uh number? How do we come up with this number? And um is is I I these are um not necessary questions for you, so just some of the things, my my thought process. Um and also question, is this the right agreement with the three cities? Are are we, you know, is this something that Pasco should go alone or? And so those are the the things that are running through my mind. Um you know, looking at uh item five point one, talking about repairs and maintenance. Um yeah, we this we have an old building, but it definitely is in disrepair. And how do we keep uh how do we honor this, making sure that we are um who the A C A is responsible for maintenance necessitated by contract, reasonable use and occupancy included but not limited to repairs, uh of entry exterior, things of that nature. And uh that's not what I see when I go to the uh to the shelter. I I I I, you know, I walk in and I'm I'm sat in and I'm it's um and so I I guess um my question is is about, is this is this the adequate contract? Uh um how how do we know that it is? And if it's not, uh how do we figure out what that what the right contract is? I'm uh uh obviously I don't know the answer to that question uh because what I have before me is, you know, just what I have before me. Um but that that's something that I'd I'd be really interested if we built, let's build a new facility as we are planning on. Uh but making sure that we uh that it's well-run. Um and obviously we have a pretty, like I feel pretty confident in our current uh contractor, um but I I definitely want to make sure that uh eh that it's functional and that eh eh and we have a good relationship and we have good partnership.
Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I I'm going to fall right in line with Mr. and um that, you know, in the section five, the facility is not being maintained appropriately. And I don't know who gets to determine to what extent that is. I'm not sure if that's us. Uh but I know that, well, I I got the uh the feeling that with the, you know, the love of the animals and the uh, you know, them, you know, pinching every penny to get whatever funding they need to get the animals taken care of, the facility is being um is warping away. So I mean, I'm okay with the contract, but but there has to be some type of uh of a check and balances to make sure that the facility is being took care of because, you know, I'm seeing in here repair of the heating and cooling system. I didn't I didn't see an adequate cooling and heating system in there. Uh obviously, the pipes are freezing. There's problems in there. So before it gets to the point where the people working in there actually get sick or something happens, um I was I was very disappointed with the electrical issues they had in the building. So somebody somebody needs to evaluate or we need to, what's or maybe um we we just need to do our due diligence to make sure that money's being appropriated for those type of things.
But Mr. Mr. Ratkey, there's a lot of moving parts because it's not just this agreement as well. We've got a fifty or sixty-year-old facility that's well beyond design limits. We've been trying for a number of years to get a new facility. We're close, I believe, but we're still not there, probably needed to be there some number of years ago. Uh there's obviously a lot of people with a lot of opinions on how to run things. And we're also, this is also a combined operation uh because it makes sense to do this tri-city wide instead of just one one jurisdiction. What what's, what 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 are the holdups or what are the concerns? What where do we, what do we need to do to get to where we're ahead of this instead of what I sense is still a bit reactive to this, if that's not putting you too much on the spot?
Well, I think two of the main points that we're looking at, one is the current condition of the facility and much like uh any of the Pasco-owned facilities, whether it's occupied by city staff directly or it's a contracted facility such as this or the M L K Center, um what what we don't know, I mean, we don't know what we don't know. So recently, we've obviously, I've gone on a tour of the facility. We've uh heard from numerous council members from all three cities. Um we've begun. Um, we've begun working directly with the, the owner, or excuse me, the uh, the director of the Chiklay Animal Foundation to identify specific issues and send our facility staff to address the issues that are currently within the facility at this point. Um, including a weekend service on the water, uh, the pipe burst and, and, and the breakage over the weekend there. So we're looking to see what we can do to keep the facility um, in, in repair and address some of the issues that are immediate in need. Um, as for the new facility, um, like you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this is a, a, a three-pronged approach. There's three cities contributing to this. Obviously, all three city councils have been very active with community members and with touring the facility. Um, and uh, so it's really trying to get everyone to the table together to work as sort of that three-pronged approach, um, which regionally can also, you know, be beneficial, but can also be uh, somewhat of a um, I don't wanna say arduous, it's not, not, not too a negative, but it's just hard to get everyone to the table just to get to that one consensus agreement. So, I mean, the new shelter project, we're, it's being discussed among the Animal Control Authority, as well as the leadership of the three cities. Um, we do plan on bringing an update on the uh, shelter facility, as well as the current state of operations um, after the new year. So that's what I can offer this evening.
I don't know if that's helpful or not. And I ju- I would note additionally, the last point I remember us struggling a bit on the shared approach to the ACA. We used to do a rotational sort of thing, that Pasco would have it for a year or two, and then Kennewick would do it, and Richland do it, even though the physically the facility was in Pasco. And the thought that, the thought was that uh, by rotating around it, stays fresh in each of the jurisdictions' mind and isn't out of sight, out of mind. We did, we stopped doing that relatively recently, a few years ago, I believe. Uh, a recommendation, uh, that, because Pasco would be better to manage it, uh, and that sort of thing. If that's, if, if there's any question mark about any of the, uh, other jurisdictions getting cold feet about this, uh, that's what I guess I'm trying to suss out here too, because it's, it's, it's in our yard. It's also, we're also probably uh, pro-rata larger user of those services, and it's also adjusted in the uh, uh, contract revision that we, we, we tend to pay more for the services that you use, uh, that sort of thing. I still think it makes sense, but boy, I'd like to just get to a new facility as soon as possible, even though the subject about this is extending the contract, but it seems like we need to get there as soon as reasonable and possible. So appreciate your thoughts. Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. Um, just two thoughts. One, looking at almost the last line item in the contract, two thousand dollars in building maintenance and repairs, obviously inadequate. Uh, where do those additional funds come from? Do we have that money? Uh, can we appropriate it? Or we're gonna have to do another intra-film loan? Don't need answers right now, things to consider. The second thing, totally separate, um, if it's difficult to get the other jurisdictions online, we did have a tri-cities city council meeting for the River Shore Reconvenience. If we find that this is something that's important both to our constituents and to the need of the health of our communities, we may wanna consider doing that. And if nothing else, at least throwing out that invite, and if it's declined, uh, at least we know where we sit. So, we might not get a hard no, but a soft no is enough to know where we need to be. Just a couple of things to consider.
Your, your, your point of if it's important for tri-cities is some sort of summit opportunity, uh, this council's a bit amenable to participating in that. It's good, good, good call. Uh, specifically, yes, Mr. Martinez?
I just wanna be clear, I, I wasn't, I wasn't wanting more responsibility on the city of Pasco. I, I think I was just as much wanting to tell the contractor um, to beware, because I don't think, I don't know how much longer that building can go. And so we have to take that into consideration. Uh, obviously, I, I, I've, I'm not putting Pasco, eh, you know, we're one-third of the responsibility. So everybody has to step up to the plate, but I just wanted to make that clear. Uh, I, I, I wasn't addressing and, and imposing something on our staff. I just was wanting to make that, that statement that um, on all parties, I mean, yes, we need to take care of the animals as much as possible, but we have a responsibility, more importantly to me, to take care of people that are running that place. So thank you.
And Mr. Zabel, I'm gonna ask, and put you on the spot a little too, since you are the city manager and work with the other city managers. Your sense or thoughts on, on this?
Actually, we just met uh, last week, uh, last week or the?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago now, for the holiday. And uh, had a good, I think, productive conversation with them. We're in the process of evaluating current estimated costs, and uh, and they, they do have, both, both cities do have dollars allocated in their budgets for construction of this facility. So it's not a surprise, everybody's on understanding that we need a new facility. And we'll be evaluating uh, alternatives on the design to try to get that to meet budgetary constraints. And that, that's gonna be over the next, over the next several weeks, and we'll be, as, as uh, Dr. Ratkai mentioned, we'll be updating council at that point in time. Uh.
You'd, you'd share the, 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 the sense that there's a, there is urgency on this, though?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, all of them are aware of the condition of the facility, its age and, and deterioration.
Okay, well, we're doing our part tonight, uh, specifically in front of us also professional services agreement extension. Uh, other thoughts, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm gonna, Mr. Ratkai, could you help clarify something for me? Cause I, I'm, I'm reading the words in front of me different than I, than I think I'm hearing from some of my, from my fellow council members. On, under that section, uh, five of, um, let's see, of article thirteen, um, it says the ACA shall be responsible for the repairs. So that's, that's this, the, the, the makeup of the three cities, not the contractor itself. So the the city governments are supposed to take care of the repair and maintenance of that facility, not the contractor. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I, 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 I was getting myself confused with that conversation. Thank you.
Okay, and other discussion, uh, there is the extension of the personal services agreement. I'll ask for your vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. With that one piece of the puzzle, we'll look forward to the uh, uh, services agreement operator working. I appreciate your, your helping out with that larger, larger part. With that, we go to section ten B, related performance of a city official. Uh, we uh, do a periodic review of our one employee that works for us, Mr. Zabel, and that's reflected in a uh, one-page or summary of that process. Uh, we would like to enter that into the record. Uh, if, first of all, first of all, Mr. Maloney, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with pleasure. I move to accept the final report by Ken, by Cambrio Inc., reflecting the city council's corporate view of the city manager's performance for the period of June twenty-eighteen to June twenty-nineteen.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a lot of enthusiastic seconds. I'm gonna go, Mr. Alvarado, on that one. Uh, other discussion on this. Uh, all those in favor of accepting the final report say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, with that too, uh, there, that consistent annual process, of course, that's gonna be coming up again, uh, Mr. Zabel. I would just uh, note, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and I think it's fair to say that council members uh, and the public also have enjoyed working with you and look forward to working another year and another year, and maybe another year after that. So as long as you keep doing the good job that you're doing, we've, we've really appreciated your efforts. Uh, and uh, uh, I don't know if you have any thoughts as the year closes out, and you have another year of Pasco under your belt?
Well, I, I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the city council and the residents and, and uh, also to lead the organization as your city manager. Um, I re- I really wanna uh, commend the council and one, for the courageous, I guess, leadership you provided for staff. We've been able to accomplish a lot in the last year and with this uh, annual budget, and uh, also the evaluation process itself, being facilitated is extremely helpful for me as your one employee to, to underst- for, that allows each of you to be heard and allows me to hear those things, as well as from a corporate perspective, which I think is really important, because while I wanna, I wanna accommodate every council member, there's going to always be competing interests among the councils, so it's really helpful for me to understand where the, at least the supermajority of the council's coming from, hopefully all of them. But uh, it's an exciting time for Pasco. I'm really excited to be here and and I saw some fingers go up when we were talking about how much more time, and I'll tell you, you could count the years on a hand. I won't get specific, but it's, it's not gonna take two can, two hands to count how many years I got left, so. With that, thank you so much.
With that, and I just, and I think it goes for application that under our form of government, the council is in charge of the policy or the, or the legislative agenda, and our s- uh, city manager is the head of the executive branch. They're the one employee that does work for city council. Uh, we do an evaluation process, and I'll agree with Mr. Zabel to hiring that out is well worth a few thousand bucks or so that costs every year uh, to do, because that is, it helps enable finding consensus uh, on a lot of things and providing a unified uh, direction to, to our one employee. And it's, that process also means that Mr. uh, Zabel is free to hire the most professional and best person for each of the various jobs in the city, and I think that's a good model for uh, cities to work on, so. Uh, process working. With that, that's our last item under section ten on the agenda. We go to eleven miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Zabel, any thoughts?
I did have a few. So, when I remind council Winterfest is uh, the Saturday, December twenty-seventh, and uh, at Volunture Park, two to six, and council's familiar with the event, but for the sake of the audience, uh, a lot of great prizes, a lot of activities, uh, the lighting of our heritage tree. And of course, for the kids, uh, there's kind of associated holiday festivities like Santa Claus and those kind of fun things. Lamson Cable Bridge, uh, we already have thirteen-hundred participants signed up for that. That's, that's coming up on the, on the twenty-first. Uh, I think we have a map right there that uh, demonstrates not only regionally, but uh, nationally known. So we're actually pulling folks in from, from around the country, uh, to do that run, and um, that's kind of an exciting thing just in itself. Uh, I wanted to also mention uh, an issue you worked on about a month ago, the BDI solid waste rates. And uh, council that are on the, were on the committee are familiar, we had a discussion about the compounding aspect uh, in the rates, uh, at the subcommittee meeting, having to do with the pass-through cost of the disposal component. And I know that's a little, that's a mouthful, apologize for that. Uh, we raised that again after council's latest action with them, uh, in our awareness, uh, letting, to, to, to alert them that council had taken action, and um, they actually submitted a revised calculation that's gonna result in about a point-seven percent uh, decrease on the rates that were associated with that disposal cost, so. What you approved is a little bit higher than what's gonna happen. We'll bring those final numbers to you next week and, and uh, I guess, re-accept those.
Good.
So that's, that's some good news. You know, there's some other costs, uh, park rentals and things like that, had nothing to do with disposal rates, so, but uh.
Uh, good, good news. Our, our, our garbage provider live and work and play in this community, uh, um, evaluate or looking at their process. That's a, that's good news, Mr. Zabel.
Okay, great. And then one more, one more item, uh, Chapel Hill Boulevard ribbon cutting Friday, this Friday, the sixth, at one P M. Uh, we'll meet on the road eighty-four side.
So there'd be a, that's, and that's the one that connects what is Maverick on sixty-eight and, and uh, nearer New School over on the, you said you can be on the eighty-four side?
Road eighty-four, yeah.
Eighty-four, okay.
So exciting, that's a, it's a great uh, link to our transportation system being uh, being improved, and that was uh, I think a successful LID uh, coming to completion.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Zabel, and Mr. Martinez?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanna make a note of all the great businesses that are coming in up on the north side of Route sixty-eight. If you haven't had a chance to go up, uh, three new restaurants, uh, Porters, uh, the uh, Kebab House, and um, and I guess Wendy's is going in there, there's a bunch of new businesses going up there, and it's a, it's a really looking very, very well. But I also wanna mention on December fourteenth, we're bringing back the luminaria that uh, we didn't, we weren't able to have last year, but it's gonna be a great event. Everybody's excited to get up there and uh, and have that event. I hope, pray for good weather for the fourteenth, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Brahas?
Yes, uh, I would like to, on behalf of Pasco, the organization, Pasco Area Safe Community Organization, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with that group. Um, our mission, our sole purpose really of the group is to support the Pasco Police Department, uh, composed by uh, volunteers and alumni that have completed the uh, Pasco Police Department Citizens Academy. Um, every year we organize this, uh, what we call it, PAIR, is the Pasco Employee Appreciation Recognition Party, where we recognize someone from police department, uh, city staff, to someone who really stands out in the community, first serving the community. So I'd like to extend the invite for everyone listening and staff to be present, uh, if you can. Uh, it will be this Friday at six-thirty P M. at the Pasco Police Department's Training Center. Um, there will be a potluck-type dinner, um, and just come and enjoy and meet some of the beautiful citizens that are participating and volunteering for the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brahas. Uh, and I'm just gonna uh, report, as we adopted uh, in our agenda, our last council meeting uh, is next week. That usually get done uh, or earlier part of December, so that council and, I think also staff can uh, schedule some holiday time as needed. Uh, also note too, that's gonna be the last council meeting that I preside as mayor, uh, while I'll be looking forward to it. I think it'll also be a bit of a bittersweet. Uh, I've also invited a variety of people, including family members, to that meeting, so if you, if you do wanna come down and uh, uh, wish this council that has done two years exemplar, as an exemplary service, and/or if you think I might have helped out a little bit, uh, come on down and wish me off uh, next uh, Monday at uh, seven P M. is our, is our meeting, which I understand is gonna be a special meeting, as well as a workshop of meetings, so it'll be a little bit of a different uh, different tone and crider. Mr. Zabel?
Uh, the, uh, the other thing I think's worth noting is uh, we'll have the swearing-in of the two council members that were re-elected, as well as uh, council member-elect Roach.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna do a lot of, that, that's, that only happens once every couple of years as well, so.
Right, passing of the torch.
Passing the torch, wonderful. With that, any other miscellaneous discussion, my council? Hearing none, uh, is there a need for an executive session?
No.
We love that answer. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.